Wonderful. All right. Good evening, everyone. We are pleased to have you join us for our June 10th Board Policy Monitoring Meeting. We welcome you. So with this, I will call this meeting to order and ask the secretary to please take the role.
Mr. Barca?
Present.
Ms. Cortez?
Here.
Mr. Hogan?
Here.
Dr. Jones? I think she's still trying to come over. Ms. Manser?
Here.
Mr. Wasserstrom? Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. It would now be in order to receive a motion to approve the agenda. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any debate over the agenda? Hearing none, the secretary will call the roll.
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones? Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Mr. Wasserstrom? Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, everyone. At this time, the Chair recognizes Dr. Bedell, who will present the report.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. On our report tonight, our first topic is going to be on, I'm sorry, let me flip my page, on SROs in school, and we wanted to talk about this. I know at this point, there's a lot of conversation that's taken place nationally around whether school districts need to have discussions to separate any type of partnership or MOUs with their local police departments. And I know as a member sitting on the largest school policing organization in the country, NASRO, you know, I have a huge voice in that. I believe there will be a Washington Post interview that I'll be participating in just regarding how I see it as a superintendent. And so what I wanted to do was to make sure that I talked to you all about this, and I know the board, a number of board members have some questions, and it's really just a discussion about safety officer presence in schools. But I want to kind of give you some overview of what we're looking at right now in our school district. Our strategic plan is Pillar B. It talks about safe climate, strong relationships with family and community. And part of that is making sure that safety above all else is one of the things that we focus on, and it's important that we make sure that our parents feel that our kids are going to be safe when they come in our schools, and that they're going to come out more educated at the end of the day. And we know, given a lot of what has happened in this nation over the past several years, the mass shootings and things of that nature, it has become more and more incumbent that school districts have to do their part to make sure that students are being protected. What I would tell people is that when you don't utilize officers or law enforcement officials correctly, then you end up having situations like we're having right now with the abuse of power and what's happening in our country with black men being murdered, black women being murdered by cops in a very, very brutal fashion. So when I came into this district four years ago, the first thing I saw was that we had officers in our schools in uniforms, and that was security officers. And I had concerns about that. And I said, I don't want this to be a feeling of us against them. So immediately, at the end of my first year, and Marcus is on this call, I met with our team, I met with the office, some of the security officers, some of the SROs, and I said, we're going to change uniforms. You're going to go into khakis, you're going to go into a polo shirt, you're going to look more relaxed. I want you all to be relationship builders with our kids. I also told our principals, it is not the responsibility of security officers and police officers to handle disciplinary infractions. They are not to go in classrooms and deal with things that administrators are certified to do. So we had to make sure that people understood there was a line. Their job is to make sure that if we got major events that take place within our schools, we're protected. We want to make sure that we don't have people coming into our buildings with weapons and doing those kinds of things, because that's what has really resulted in us losing a number of students in this country to mass shootings. And so our security officers are employees of KCPS. These are people that we hire. They are present in our schools Monday through Friday in our middle and high schools, and then we have patrol officers that travel and cover elementary schools. So those are people that the district hired. As far as SROs are concerned, we have six in the district. They work in our high schools, they're present in our schools Monday through Friday, they are employees of the Kansas City Police Department. Those SROs are individuals that is through an MOU, that it doesn't cost the district a penny, and these are individuals that are on our campuses doing more than just being a police officer. These are folks who are mentors, one of our SROs coaches for us, she's a volleyball coach, these kids think the world of her. We have another SRO over at Northeast High School who works with these kids and helps them get jobs. He's also a mentor. And we had a student who posted on Twitter recently, the impact that that officer is having on him over at Northeast High School, that he's more than an officer to me, and not wanting to have them get categorized all under one umbrella as being bad of people. You know, I think our kids have spoken around that, at least from the several that I've spoken to, and even some of our principals. So then we do utilize off-duty KCPD officers, and we generally do that with athletic events and some of our special events where we have a lot of folks. And so what we said in 2018 was we decided that we were going to move the security from the Facilities Division, and we moved them to the Student Support Divisions. And the reason why I wanted to do that was because I wanted our officers to really focus on how to build relationships. You are here as a student support. You're not here to be a disciplinarian, you're not here to be the enforcer, right? Your job is to get in here and build the positive relationships that I need you to have with students and families, and we want you to be able to have a greater impact on our community, showing up and being visible at these extracurricular events, which a lot of them do, even when they're not on the clock, because they built these relationships with these kids. We wanted to make sure that as a district, we were beginning a difficult work of transforming and being able to reciprocate the challenging perceptions that existed in the relationships between our students and the local police. So having them on our campus allowed for our kids to see them differently. We've done a lot of training, de-escalation training, cultural proficiency training, youth and mental health and first aid training, use of force and case law training. There's a ton of training that we've done, and even when I started Board, our people weren't getting some of the national training. So I invited some of them to attend the National School Resource Officer Conference, which I happen to think is one of the best conferences out there in terms of teaching our security and police officers how they should be interacting and how they should be a part of the school culture and climate. So we've had people attend that conference every year that I've been here, and all of them have been pretty excited about what they've been able to learn. We have a very, I tell people, when we think about our officers, many of them are men. About 65% of our security officers are black, about 22% are white, 12% are Hispanic. We know our makeup of our district is 50% black, 56% black, 27% Hispanic, 10% white. We know with our SROs, I believe that we have six of them, 66% of them are white, and then the other 33% or so, 34% or so are black. But we, you know, I guess for me, I want to make sure that everybody understand that our goal as a school district was to create this relationship with our SROs where they were here more of a support. And what I can tell you in the four years I've been here, we haven't been in the news for crazy stuff going on with police officers and some of the things that happened in the past. There's some people who've been a part of this district when we had some significant issues with how, you know, policing was going on in our schools and how people were being treated. That has shifted significantly since I've come here. I haven't had major problems. We've had our typical things that sometimes you have a brawl and you have things like that that occur, and we're then having to intervene. But for the most part, we have done everything in our power to really build the relationship, and we have, in my opinion, a great working relationship with our students and with our community. So I just wanted to give you all an overview, because I know there's pressure coming in saying, we need to get rid of officers, we need to get rid of, we need to get rid of security officers and all of that, and we need to hire more trauma-informed personnel. Well, we beefed up trauma performance, we beefed up a lot of our social workers, psychologists, family therapists, we've done that, we've built that up, we've been going out and getting grants. We have a relationship with the Center for Conflict Resolution. In fact, the SRO over at Southeast went through the training with the staff. So, you know, we try to be very inclusive, but I just wanted to kind of leave it there. And at this point, open it up for questions. I have Dr. Collier, I also have Marcus, who's available to help field any questions or observations or concerns that you all may have.
Dr. Bedell, thank you for providing just an overview of our current. Mr. Hogan has a question.
Yeah, so, Dr. Bedell, thank you for this. I know emails came through really quickly in the last few days, and you reacted really quickly, so thank you for doing that, as well as for the overview. I think it was helpful. I believe that I remembered that our security was part of the Student Services Organization, but the why behind it was kind of revealing to me. So I actually appreciate the thoughtfulness of why that transition was made. And I'll say as well before my question is, look, you're not the guy that's going to come out here and make things seem rosier than they are to appease the board, right? And sometimes that may not be so fun for the board, but I appreciate the fact that you're going to be direct and honest with us. And so that gives me a greater sense of relief around how you're handling, you know, our security officers as well as the relationships with the SROs. I think for me, my question would be, it's kind of a question, kind of a statement, is my concern is with the SROs, if something, let's say a major mistake was made that caused an injury to a child or something like that, because an officer got aggressive, overly aggressive, given that they're not employees of the district, and that they are employees of KCPD, and knowing the leadership within that organization, my concern is that they won't be held accountable in an appropriate way. So I struggle with how we address that particular component, right? Because once that happens, you don't really have any jurisdiction, you can't discipline that SRO, right? You're leaving it up to a police chief, who we know, and look, I'll say this, it's a public forum, and it's not from a political perspective, it's really just, I haven't seen any leadership come out of KCPD at the chief level that gives me a level of comfort that the problems within that organization are going to be addressed very directly. So where I'm wrestling is, does it make sense, if the city is going to fund these folks to do that work, is there an opportunity to get the funds from the city instead of the people, and we go beef up our own security team leveraging those dollars where we can hold those people accountable if something goes wrong from a performance perspective? Does that make sense?
I mean, I'm following you, and what I would tell you is, it's, you know, unless you become a school district that is saying, hey, we're going to have our own in-house police force. So the Houston Independent School District has its own in-house police force there. The district hires these people, but they are trained just like an HPD officer, they go through all of that, but the district, they're the districts, and the district then, they fall under every policy and every procedure that's in place that they would have to abide by like any other employee. The question would be for us, and I have to talk with Bill, is as we think about our MOU, you know, what leverage do we have? Because it is free. And I don't know that the police department is just going to say, I'm going to give you guys, you know, six FTEs and give you full reign over that. I don't know that that's even practical at this point. So we would just ultimately then lose those six officers, you know, for me, that have been able to articulate the value that they've offered to this district and to these students that doesn't cost us anything, but they go through the training that we go through. I was in Gatlinburg with them last year at the NASRO conference, getting to know them better and watching them go through those training sessions. So we have done everything to make sure that not only do we include our security folks, we also include our SROs in those trainings too. But I mean, I hear what you're saying, and that is a piece that we have to sit down and talk through on. I don't have an answer other than what I just shared.
Yep, that's fair. Thanks.
Dr. Bedell, in your planning on this, have you had our general counsel, Bill Thornton, review our insurance policy to see whether if some sue-happy person had an extra hundred bucks and decided to sue us because of some action caused by an SRO, you know, sued the SRO but threw us in for grins, whether our insurance company would cover it? Or have you covered in the memorandum of understanding with police that they would indemnify us for any actions that an SRO is accused to have taken improperly?
Well, I would tell you, Mr. Thornton's been tied up with a lot of sunshine request work, so I can tell you right now, we haven't had no opportunities to look at the MOU or go any deeper into some of those items.
Well, the MOU took place prior to the sunshine request, I assume.
It did, but what I'm saying, Mr. Wasserstrom, this is brand new, and we got other deadlines that we have to meet, so we just haven't had an opportunity.
Okay.
But we will.
Good. Mr. Barca, did you have a question?
Yeah, and again, just to reiterate what Nate had said, you know, Dr. Bedell, thank you for you and your team taking the time to add this to the agenda, to have this important discussion. A couple of questions here. Why do we have, I guess, can you help me further clarify the need for some of the off-duty work from KCPD when we have the security within our own outfit now and how the choice is made, I guess, to leverage them versus our own security team?
Yeah, absolutely. Part of your issue is, there are incidents that may arise above the authority that our security officers have, because they are not a certified, trained police officer. So when you have incidents that occur, and you know, at some of our games, we've had things break off. There's been times when we've had to say, hey, we just can't simply play this school again, because when the two communities get together, there are things that arise to a level where it's beyond what our security officers can handle. They don't have the ability, they can't write tickets and do all of those things, they can't arrest people, and we have had some violent altercations. I mean, everybody can look at the data in this city right now, we're well ahead of where we were last year with murders. So, you know, our job is, if we want to have these events like this, we have to depend on them to help us to make sure that our kids are going to be safe when they get to the game and when they leave, and that we can get people out to go on about their business rather than people, you know, clogging up in the parking lot and getting into some type of violence altercation that, you know, just puts a black eye on what we're trying to do to really build a sense of community.
Yeah, thank you for that. That helps me understand some of that, the balance of when we use, who we use. I guess the other question, I know you alluded to some of it, but specifically, I mean, when it comes to the trainings that we do for our security officers, as well as, it sounds like, engaging our SROs, and even, I guess, our off-duty officers at this point, do we know if they're CIT-trained, the Crisis Intervention Training that KCPD offers, or that they have any specific racial equity? Obviously, you mentioned de-escalation, but, I mean, is that equitable across all three of those different forms? Okay.
No, it's definitely not for the hourly people that we hire. I can tell you that. Now, Marcus, or, you know, Darryl, or Jennifer, if you want to chime in on the answer part of Mr. Barca's question, that's fine, but I can tell you for that third group, absolutely not.
I can speak to that. This is Marcus, the Security Director. You know, we do, we have CIT training, we had a million youth health training, we had de-escalation training, we actually have everything that the police officer have. We do the exact same training. As a matter of fact, it's post-certified, Stansford Police Officer Standards and Testing Training. So we do all of that. And we do it, as a matter of fact, and we do it every year. Some police departments don't do it every year, but we do that kind of training every year constantly.
Sure. Yeah, thank you for that kind of background, that, because I think that's a large part of this discussion, right, is the training and how often does it happen, and is it enough training? And, you know, some of these benchmarks that we talk about, I think, are even being questioned about, you know, do police officers have enough training on some of these issue areas? My final question, I guess, refers more towards, I guess, any of these three again. If a member of our community has an issue with either our security force or an off-duty officer, any of that, what is their grievance process for how a situation is, I guess, investigated, and how does that all happen if somebody were to come up with a situation that they're just not satisfied with?
Well, I can tell you with our employees, and Marcus, you may be able to answer on the HPD side. I can only answer for what I know we do in our system, and if it's anybody affiliated with our system, anybody can send something right through Let's Talk, they can directly email me at AskSuperintendent.org. When we get this information, or people can go directly to HR if they feel like somebody's been mishandled or mistreated, Maryland will do an investigation. We have done that, we have placed folks on leave, and I'm not saying officers, but I'm just saying in general, our process applies to everybody in our system, that they will have an opportunity to address their concerns, and we will go through and do an investigation. Is that correct, Jennifer Collier?
That is correct. Yes.
Now, is anything on the, I mean, because, yeah, you know, from the HPD standpoint, those SROs, we do have an MOU with them, and if our principals make a request that they want to go in a different direction, or we feel that we've gotten some concerns from them, we do have that ability and flexibility to say to HPD, we would like to have a different officer working with us. Now, as far as, like, complaint, to your point that you mentioned earlier, both Nate and Mr. Hogan and Mr. Barca, right, the discipline, then, I don't know what happens there once it gets into the hands of the chief.
Yeah, just to finally reiterate, my colleague, Mr. Hogan's comment is, I agree in that area, is that that would be a concern of mine as well, is, you know, if we do have an issue with an off-duty officer, a KCPD SRO, we kind of, it's out of our hands, right? And my guess is that if anyone's suing, they're suing us and not necessarily the police department. So I appreciate you guys taking the time to work through this issue.
And Dr. Bedell, that may be information that could come back to the board, just for us to better understand, you know, what the complaint process is. And I think that process is only related to those six individuals, correct?
Yeah, I'd say that's the piece.
Only, and those FTEs, if I understood you correctly, they are only working during after-school events. Is that correct?
The SROs, you talking about the six?
I'm talking about the six, correct.
They're in our schools Monday through Friday.
Okay.
Now, we also have off-hour, where people will come and work a game, so we will have HPD come and work a game along with our in-house security.
All right. Additional people for questions?
Because I'm glad you asked that question. I was trying to write everything down. I will go back and re-watch this so I can write it all down, but a one cheater would be really helpful to me about, you know, because those were a lot of numbers, and where we're using them, and the training, and I was writing down things like they've been trained in excessive use of force, and, yeah.
Sure.
I would like to know those pieces of information, because when I'm, as I'm learning about what I should really be concerned and watching for, I want to make sure we're matching up with those issues and that. But I just, I need something to look at. So it doesn't have to be this Friday.
It can be this Friday, it's already done. I'll get it to you on Friday.
Yes, and can I just add, in terms of the training, as Dr. Bedell just indicated, there is a very long list of training that our security officers receive, and of that training, about four of those hours is around cultural competency. But one of the things that we've been talking about the last couple of days, as we've been looking more at our SROs and security officers, is making sure that those SROs also go through some of the training that our new employees are going through. So in addition to what they are already receiving, they're going to go through sort of like a new employee orientation, where they will get the cultural competency that we provide, the implicit bias training that we do with our staff, the social, emotional, all of that, they will receive that as well in the future. So that's something that's going to start this fall, before we come back with our students, they will have experienced that same training. And I know we're not talking about Kelly subs right now, but we've also decided that those subs that work in our buildings consistently will also go through that training, so that they are also better prepared to work with our students and our families.
Thank you. Dr. Jones?
Thank you.
Dr. Jones, we're having a hard time hearing you try to get closer to your machine.
Another question that I had was more around the record of the officers. Is there perhaps a way to have a policy that says that, you know, if an officer has already had complaints against them, that they cannot serve, so I'm specifically talking about those who are KCPD or whomever officers, you know, we need to somehow have a screening process that says if you have, you know, I know maybe not all of them are founded, but if they have several complaints, that they can't serve in that capacity.
Okay, so, Dr. Jones, are you referring to both? Because we would definitely, I know it's easy to do that for the six that are working in our schools, but you're saying for anybody doing anything extracurricular with the district?
Yeah.
Okay.
The folks who might be at, like, the games, or the people who you said are in the school Monday through Friday, at the high schools, that's what I'm thinking about.
Okay.
Have interaction with students.
Marcus, we can definitely do that, right? And we may do it already, I just don't know. I'm not going to sit here and try to act like I know.
Yeah, yes, yeah, we do that, and as a matter of fact, sometimes, we watch those officers very closely when they're in our schools, so we have security supervisors that work for the district, and we see an officer that we think is not a good fit, we call the police department, and we tell them, we don't want that person back. So we do watch them very, very carefully.
Okay, so I think being, so what Dr. Jones is saying is, is there any way that we can have an idea of officers that may have, you know, received complaints or have a history of being into some type of issue, and being able to say, okay, those are the people that we need to not be contacting to, you know, to work our extracurricular activities, is what I'm hearing?
No, we wouldn't be able to see that, because that would be personnel.
Right, that's what I thought. Yeah, that's the issue, is the personnel piece. That's, I mean, it's like us, we can't put out personnel information that we're, you know, just legally, we can't. So, yeah, that's why I'm asking that question.
Dr. Jones, do you have a follow-up? And then, I'm not seeing anybody raising their hand, I have a couple of questions. Do you know, Dr. Bedell, or Mr. Harris, Mike Bealy, answer this, the total number of security officers we're currently using within our district who are on staff?
The total number? Sure, man, I'm struggling to see here. Hold on, give me a second here. Marcus or Jennifer, I'm struggling to see that exact number, what's the total number of security officers? Marcus or Jennifer, I'm struggling to see that exact number with the total number of security officers? I mean, we have it. I just can't. I don't see it here.
So, if it's difficult to get like on the fly like this, that's okay. I think what would be helpful when we're getting the follow-up information is, I want to know, I want to get a sense of the percentage of people who are not like, of the to, what is the total number? And then, we, we now know that there are six SROs who are, come to us from the Kansas City Police Department who work in our buildings Monday through Friday. And I want to know what, what percentage of the total security team they represent. And then, the other thing you addressed is you provided information on racial and ethnic composition. And then, I think it is for me as well, I would say would be useful to know what kinds of liability or protection we have related to non-KCPs personnel in the case of an incident. I'm aware from my time on this board of the enormous amount of training that's been undertaken and how that's been implemented over the last four years. So, I think it will be valuable for us to get that in writing because I know there was incredible investment that, in, in cultural competency and in other kinds of de-escalation and other kinds of training. And that, in fact, our entire training for our full staff across the board, not just including security, has really been increased. And, and I'm really appreciative of that. So, I look forward to that follow-up information. Are there additional questions?
You all had a question about the total number of, of security FTEs.
Yeah.
Yes.
There are eighty total FTEs. However, at, at this time, eighteen of them are vacant. We're actually in the process now of interviewing and making selections for officers as we prepare to go into the next school year, but a total of eighty FTE at this point.
Thank you. All right. Are there other questions on this discussion before Dr. Bedell moves to the next item? Okay, and as always, you can email your questions into Dr. Bedell. Thank you for sharing that information.
Thank you. And like I said, we'll definitely look into these questions that you all raised tonight as we look at the MOU and, and some of those other components. So, what I, what I want to do at this point is to move to our workshop presentation on opening up schools. And so, I'm going to pass this over to Dr. Shepherd and Dr. Jackson to talk to you all about where we are right now and the progress we're making and what our plans are as we continue to engage our faculty and staff, but also the community. So, we'll, we'll, we'll move over, over on that at this point.
Good evening. Part of our process for school start has been engaging all of our stakeholders. We've, we've been engaging teachers, we've been engaging principals, and we will be engaging students, parents, and other community members as we move forward. And what you will hear tonight is some of the things that we're doing to prepare for the start of the school year. We have not come publicly with a lot of our announcements yet because we are still working them out. And by the time that we actually come and show this to the public, we want to make sure that it's been vetted and it's been through multiple eyes before we actually put it out there. The first thing that we're working on is the calendar for 2021. We've given three calendar preferences. We actually started with more and we had a conversation in the ca, at the cabinet level and we determined that we did not want to move forward with all of the recommendations, but we looked at the ones that we felt like were actually feasible for us to get done within the two months that we have between now and the start of school. And so, I'm not, I don't have those calendar options on here because I want to make sure that I bring them to you once we have the final two. The, as you see here, the option C, which is a modified school calendar with intercession breaks, is actually winning as the first choice of many of our stakeholders. And these are all internal stakeholders. We have not vetted external stakeholders yet. Internal, that would be our principals, our executive team and our team and our cabinet who have actually participated in this survey. And then, second, you would see, the second choice would be the normal school calendar, which is the one that we've already adopted. And it's the one that allows two weeks prior to school start for the, you know, three days of professional development, then teacher workdays. And then, there is the option B, which is the same as option A, but it moves everything up by two weeks. Then, the next thing on our survey was, what calendar option would you rank second in your preference? And what we did was, we added up the percentage who had a first and second choice for each option. And what we see here is that option C is actually winning. And then, option A, and then, option B is the one that has the least amount of buy-in. When you look at the, the option, the first preference and then the second preference, there were much less for first preference for option B. And the last question that we ask, and each question that we ask, we provided everyone with an opportunity to provide written feedback around what things we should be looking at, why you like the calendar, and what things should be considered. The last question was, choose two items that you feel should have priority as we look at what it is that we adopt for the 2021 calendar. And we see that eighty-six point four percent of our internal stakeholders said student learning. And then, we had fifty-three point one percent come with safety. And then, a pretty distant third was consistency. But we see, I think, with financial efficiency, flexibility, and childcare options, it's not that they weren't, they aren't important. It's just that when we look at all of these, I think the ones that were found to be most important and should have priority would be student learning and safety. And so, as we move forward, we want to make sure that whatever option that we choose and whatever that we do, that we consider the, the things that we feel like should have priority. And then, another, we've actually started up a task force. And the task force, Dr. Jackson is going to speak about that. And that task force is more around the specifics and the recommendations around how we will start school and what every component of the, the work that we do will look like as we move forward. Dr. Jackson, are you here?
I'm here.
All righty.
And so, as we look at the re-entry, re-entry plan for school year 21, we tried to pull together as many stakeholders as we could within our internal body as we begin to ask, ask and answer many of the questions that we have. And so, we've come up with twenty-five workgroups. And those workgroups are populated by about three hundred people across our system. And those people are really looking at and delving deep into specific topics. And so, topics such as teacher expert expectations, student expectations, and grading, what is it going to look like? And how are we going to support our special populations? Our ELL students, our 504 students, our special needs students? What is early childhood education going to look like? How are we going to manage our human resources? And what are those practices as we go into this unfamiliar territory, moving into school year 21 and its new makeup of what it's going to look like? And then, the building re-entry protocol. What is that protocol? And what things would you be considering along this journey? And so, we have groups of people who have expertise in these areas along with individuals who may be in other areas that support these topics, really answering some questions. And there are lots of questions they're having to answer. And as they answer those questions, they're creating solutions and creating a plan that's three-tiered. And so, we're looking at, what if we're in person? What if, which is our Plan A? Our Plan B is looking at, what if we're doing some blended learning? That means there's some learning which was happening online, some learning is face-to-face with the teacher in a classroom. And then, that third model, which we saw last quarter, of virtual learning, where it's completely online learning. And so, we're looking at all these questions. These workgroups really have done some pretty awesome work in, in looking at the different resources that are out there already, looking at the guidance around CDC guidance that they're putting on the table, looking at the Missouri School Board Association and their questions that they're putting on the table and their model. And then, looking at models from across the country to kind of see what can fit Kansas City Public Schools as we begin to transition into this school year 21. So, these, these twenty-five groups are led by some individuals. And on that next slide, we're going to see some of those individuals are sitting at the table, which are part of that champions group. And this is, these, these champions are across, run the spectrum across our system. And so, we have curriculum specialist at the table, we have our Director of Transportation, we have our legal services at the table, assessment accountability, fine arts coordinator, early childhood staff. And what we're doing is, we're looking at all the different questions that are coming to the table and solutions and beginning to vet those. And so, we're putting eyes on these plans and beginning to really critique them. So, over the last three weeks, this group has really coalesced and said, here, here's our direction and where we're trying to go and answering all these particular questions. And so, now, we're starting to get, look at those plans and begin to fine-tune those plans and have questions for that group to go back and to consider and to ensure that as we look at this from a systems level, that all things are aligned so that when we go to the next step in this phase, which the next step is to begin to get, by late June, we'll have a plan ready to present to cabinet so that we can then begin to have some conversations with our families, our students, taking a look at this plan and saying, what are some holes that we may have in it? What are some gaps? What are some considerations we need to be looking at? And so, we want to do the heavy lifting internally first before we begin to put a plan out there, again, to the public or to our other outside stakeholders so that when they begin to look at it, we're really filling in gaps and answering some additional questions that may come up that we may not have considered in our process. And so, we are very hopeful to have this process completed by the end of June so that it can be moving further along in the process by early part of July and certainly having some final product to get to both the board and to the public mid-July.
Okay, all right. One of the things that we do every year, and I think some of you have participated in this in the past, is a Principal's Leadership Institute. And we usually do that at the end of June, beginning of July. And we are going to do that again this year. You see, June 29th, we have some presenters from Solution Tree. We actually have some very, some world-class presenters that will be here. And they will be talking about how we respond to all of the things that education is going through right now. As a teacher and as a principal, how do you respond and ensure that children are learning? Because one of the things that we have to accept responsibility for is, whatever our model is and whatever, you know, whether we're in school and whatever the calendar is, we are still responsible for student learning. And so, a part of our Principal Leadership Institute will talk about ways that we can continue to implement some of the things that we've been doing, such as professional learning communities, response to intervention, and the likes. And so, the second day, June 30th, we will actually have sessions where, they're breakout sessions, where our principals and their staff will be able to choose which session that they want to go to. We've actually worked with this group and we've given them some very specific direction around what it is that our principals wanted. And so, we are excited about this because we believe that this will be a really monumental one. This is the first time we've ever had to do one online. We've had to do one virtually, but nevertheless, we're excited about it because we actually have a virtual platform that we'll be using so that they can go into the different sessions and they can click into different rooms. And then, we'll also have our own principals presenting on things that work for them. We had a lot of principals that really had a lot of great things going on and throughout the virtual process that we had in the spring. And so, we want them to tell about their experience and to tell how they were able to garner buy-in and how they were able to actually make sure the children were learning and that thing, that teachers were actually teaching the standards and able to meet the needs of their kids. And so, we will actually have several of our principals along with these four individuals speaking each hour, each ninety minutes on those items. And then, July 1st will be more of an in-house where we actually talk about housekeeping things in Kansas City. We'll look at, hopefully by then, we'll actually have our, our guidebook done so that we can go over that. We'll have a calendar adopted and we'll have all of the learning that we've had over the, the previous two days. And we'll put our principals into cadres so that they can work together and they can look at what this actually looks like for their individual schools. While we'll have a lot of tight, there will be some loose because we know that each school has a different nuance. And so, we need to make sure that they're able to work through those things and work through those situations so that we can make sure that we have the best product and the best outcomes when the children return. And then, Teacher Institute, we are, this is still a work in progress. But each year, for the last two years, this will be our third year, we actually have Teacher Institute. And teachers have given us lots of feedback around what it is that they want. Some of what they want is digital resource training. And then, some of what they want is just ways to teach children, ways to teach kindergarteners how to read if we actually have a virtual platform. And what are some things that they can do to increase rigor if we go digital or if the children come to school? So, we will have a lot of those sessions for them to choose from. And my thoughts are that this will be a, probably be a virtual institute as well. And we plan on using our virtual tools to provide the options for our teachers so that they can choose what they feel like they need. And we'll have things for people at every level. If you're a beginner with technology, we will actually have sessions that, that are there for you if you're intermediate or if you're advanced. We'll have some sessions for every level. And then, in July, we'll also be offering some paid teacher professional development opportunities if they want to come and get more of the digital learning. And we've adopted some resources this year. And those resources are digital resources. I know we are in the process of finalizing our secondary math and our secondary English Language Arts. And we will be finalizing within the next few weeks our ELA digital resources. And so, we look forward to being able to teach our teachers these things and to train them on how to use these resources. It was very important for us as we adopted new resources that all of them had a robust digital component. Dr. Sanders?
Good evening, everyone. It's always good to see everyone. And let's tell you what's going on in athletics. Well, as you, as you all are aware, that we are governed by several different organizations. The one that you mostly hear about is Missouri State High School Athletic Association. That's our local body of governance, but they get a lot of their instruction or what's happening across the nation from the National Federation of Sports. Now, the reason that I'm telling you this is because right now, we are, we are taking steps to, to, to function as a normal school year would start off. But we know this is not a normal school year because it wasn't a normal end of the school year. So, sixty days from now, our young people will be starting the fall sports. Next slide, if you please. However, I'd like to also indicate that right now, we are starting Phase One starting this upcoming Monday. We have a three-phase approach to starting fall sports. Basically, our first fifteen days from June 15th to July 2nd, we are introducing our, basically, it's to get our young people's legs and win back underneath them. No physical contact, separation, things like that. But when I say business as usual, it's still, it's a different kind of business as usual for us. Usually, during this time of year, same thing, our site athletic group, athletic directors reviewing the needs of their coaches and getting quotes for uniforms and equipment. The district office, we're buying, getting uniforms, equipment, scheduling, all the little fine-tuning things before we happen. What's new this year is, the coaches and trainers are working on practice plans, that's not new, but maintaining safety for our student athletes, screenings, cleaning areas, things that we've done in the past, but now we know it's a more frequent that we have to do it. Yes, sir, Mr. Washington. I saw a hand raised?
Mr. Wasserstrom, did you, do you have a question that you're trying to ask?
Wait until he finishes his presentation. I just wanted to get in line for the questions after he finishes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And another thing we're doing too is, we will, we'll make sure we got plenty of time in between our workouts. Because in the fall, just give you an example, in the fall, you'll have a football team going, a soccer team going, a volleyball team, you have a softball team coming. So, they're all using, but we want to make sure that after they practice whatever, that we can get back in there, wipe down the equipment, and get everything going. Our coaches and our athletic trainers will need to also really emphasize this year, any kind of pre-existing conditions that a young person might have or anyone in their home having any risk of COVID or anything like that. Along with making sure, because we use Privet, having emergency contacts if needed for individuals that test positive in a screening. Next slide, if you would please. Some other things that we're doing this year that we've never done in the past, we actually purchased commercial disinfecting sprays, wipes, hand sanitizers, things that the coaches can hand wipe so they can keep in their pockets to wipe off bars if we're lifting weights outside. Also something that we're doing this year that we've never done before, a lot of our student athletes might be participating and they'll share a bottle, you know, a bottle of water. Well, right now for our, starting on June, starting here in the next, on Monday, we bought individual water bottles, individual small towels. We're also buying the young folks masks that they have to wear when they're idle. And it's all washable. And each, each school pretty much has a washer and dryer. But if not, we'll be here at Anderson for them to wash and dry those towels and their face masks to keep them clean. One other thing that we've stressed and we've had meetings all week with all our coaching staffs from all five high schools. We want to make sure that the coaches, please tell student athletes, if you're sick, stay at home. I know most of us have been in athletics or bands or whatever. Sometimes we go to practices even though we don't feel good because we don't want someone to take our spot or something like that. We are saying, don't worry about it. Let's make sure that you are fine. Sick individuals who arrive are screened immediately and protocol for illness persons is affected. Basically what we're going to do is when a mother or father, grandparents drop those folks off, we're going to have like a staging area where those people will come through and get tested. We're telling the coaches, athletic directors and athletic trainers, those parents are not allowed to leave until we have verified that the young person is okay. If he or she is, has the incorrect temperature, we will send that individual back home for a 14-day period and tracking that individual as well. The screening for entrances and also let's just say mom and dad, mom and dad are late, grandparents are late. We'll basically have another holding area at the end to make sure as we're cleaning up for the next group of athletes to come through, that they can be six foot apart where they won't interact with anyone else. Along with also our trainers are having an emergency action plan for all the athletes for returning to with COVID or any other things like that. So those are the kind of things we're working on. But besides that, the other things, we really don't know what Misha's going to come out with. Things that we thought about, if we have to limit the amount of space of individuals, we might even pre-sell tickets so we know exactly how many folks. Also, we might not be able to play at each stadium. Our largest football and soccer stadium is the Isle Field where we can actually separate. We've also determined that if we have to make six-foot spacing between, it'd take about two days to go out and put marks every six feet for the people to participate. Also for like during volleyball season, we know Central has the biggest volleyball court and the biggest volleyball space. So our goal, number one priority is to keep our young people safe so they don't transmit the COVID back to their families. That's our number one priority. Our goal each and every day is we check all the websites, NFS, Misha, find out where, where the trends are going. Right now, we're trending up a little bit. Hopefully, and we are praying about it, that the trends will go down so our, so our fall sports season won't be interrupted. So that's what we're doing. Also, I want to make sure, I need to see all you board members at our games and stuff this year. The kids like seeing you, we like seeing you. And we're going to have a heck of a year. One other thing, we had a young man from Lincoln, the linebacker, received an award here in this fall for being the best linebacker in the area. It is named after Warren. And Mr. Warren was a Southeast high school football player that lost his life early in life. And this is the first time a KCPS student, athlete, football player has won that award, which was really exciting for this young man. Young man has already signed a Division One scholarship with the University of Arkansas. So that's what's going on in athletics. I always want to thank you guys for your support. Without you, we don't have an athletic program and we appreciate all the things you do. And we're looking forward to fall and we're looking forward to going to state a lot. That's our goal. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Dr. Sanders. Yeah, we're all about going to state, so let's do it. Dr. Bedels, is there anything else you want to say before I open it for questions? And I'll have Mr. Wasserstrom go first with his questions.
No, madam, Sarah.
Okay, Mr. Wasserstrom.
For approximately 200 years, the guiding principle of the state of Missouri has been voc populi supremae lex esto. The voice of the people shall be the highest law. And so to get a sense of what the voters in Sub District Five, which I represent, are feeling, I recently sent out a survey. And based on the responses to date, 65% of the voters in Sub District Five look to meeting CDC guidelines before we reopen classrooms. Approximately 35% say that they don't want to see the classrooms reopened unless things get better. So I'm eager to go beyond the teachers and administration and reach out to the families that live in Kansas City Public Schools to get a read on how they feel about returning to classrooms. You know, I think we should reopen schools for the fall semester with the distance learning because I don't think you get the virus off of the computer. But in terms of reopening classrooms, having sports and other activities at school, we don't want to end up like the Spanish influenza where it started out fairly mild, but on the second wave, we got up to having 200,000 deaths in the United States in one day. We ended up having both in the United States as well as around the world. Five times the people dying from the Spanish flu than died in World War I itself. So it's a serious situation. And I'm thankful that we have conscientious staff at Kansas City School District that are working diligently so that we're in a position to move with the changes as we learn more. But I certainly would encourage the staff to survey the entire community and more importantly, to stay in touch with the CDC to see whether they have any advice and opinion about the safety of reopening classrooms this fall.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Cortez.
So I actually want to follow on Mr. Wasserstrom's comments with more specificity, which is really how and when are we planning to engage the community outside the central office and the building administrators? And I would encourage you to think about, in, in that, and in, in thinking about that, I am concerned by the idea of waiting until we have a plan and we're basically just asking them to fill in gaps as opposed to gaining a deeper understanding of where our parents and families are before we've kind of gotten 98% of the way or whatever the percentage might be to our final answer. I am concerned about how that might impact the relationship and people feeling engaged in the process.
I'll jump in here to address, I think, both of those. And those are great questions and I appreciate the perspective from both of you on that. We did employ our thought exchange platform in the last two weeks to gather what worked well, what was not so well in our distance learning process in the last few months. And that thought exchange, those results will be coming out at the end of this week. Turn those internally and externally as well. But to your point, after we gather this internal stakeholder feedback throughout this week, next week will be our chance to engage our patrons, our families, and how they feel about, one, calendar options and, two, comfort level with coming back in the fall. So to your points exactly, we really want to hear from our families about, again, their comfort level and these calendar options that we're thinking about. So as we go into next week with that engagement period with online surveying, as well as our student services team, our transportation team engaging personally with our parents, asking specific questions about transportation and comfort level, we'll feel really good about those responses coming back to you and, and seeing what our plan is and what our comfort level is with that approach to back to school. So appreciate your comments very much and really do anticipate next week being that engagement period for our families and our patrons.
Could, could I ask, just that you, when, when that goes out, you share that link with all of us? Because I think all of us have been in contact with families and others within the district who would like to share their opinions.
Yes, certainly more than happy to do that, whether it's a Friday update or through a normal course of communications. You got it, Ms. Cortez, happy to do so.
Thank you very much. I have other questions, but I'm going to jump to the back of the line.
Okay, next, who's got a question?
This is, oh, go ahead, Emmy.
Go ahead, Dr. Cortez.
Oh, I was just going to say that, just a, just a thought. I think that there, there is going to be a percentage of families who decide that they don't want to come back. Like I think we're, we're seeing that in sort of national surveys. There are some families who are going to feel that way. But I just don't want that to be the only voice that we hear. I would like, I know this is, I have no answer for how we do this, but I think there's also a substantial number of families who are very worried that we won't come back. And they're very worried, not just for like logistic reasons, but because they're worried that their kids have fallen behind. And so I just, you know, I just think all voices will have to be equally heard. And I know you guys will have to make your logistical conclusions from that, from what you hear and learn. But it's, it's just, I just think we can't have like one voice sort of dominate the whole thing. The people who are very cautious versus the people who are kind of like, yes, I'm cautious, but I'm balancing other risks, very real risks, you know, to my, to my family, my kids by not sending them. So that's, take, you know, that may not, may or may not be useful, so.
Mr. Barca.
Yeah, just a couple of questions about how, I guess, we go about the athletics component, right? Is how, I appreciate the, the monitoring and the checking as, as we bring kids back for some of these athletic preparations. I want to, and this is a question I asked before about kind of how we re-enroll, is what are the thresholds that we meet or exceed that we then decide or have to make the decision to end the program? Are we just relying solely on some of our national or even regional associations to make these decisions? Or are we going to say after three kids on a team gets sick, then we have to unfortunately shut down that specific side? You know, obviously I'm assuming the worst here sadly because of the Spanish flu history. But do we have those thresholds or are we thinking about that as well? Because I just want to make sure that outside of the social distancing and the fan experience and all of that stuff, we have specific triggers in place where we know that we have to do X, Y, and Z and not necessarily wait for the unfortunate two things to occur.
Well, sir, basically what we've done with, with our, even with our phased-in approach, we use the CDC guidelines, the national NFS guidelines. And we also were doing considerable amount of work with Children's Mercy Hospital, who's, who provides our trainers. So they're the ones from, from the medical perspective that we're using for our, I guess, I would say our anchor to give us information of what they're thinking. So that's why there will be no practices had at any of those fields that we don't have a trainer that's doing all that and taking that data back and analyzing it for us. So that's how we've approached it.
So that, I'm actually going to, I'd like to follow on to that, Dr. Sanders. You had, one of my questions was who owns the protocols? Who's responsible at the sites to enforce those? Would that be the trainers or the coaches?
It would be the trainers. Just like, just like from when we have heat emergencies, the trainers are the ones that say, too much heat, we got to stop practice. Lightning, you got to go. So they're the ones that set that protocol because we've given that responsibility because of, coaches sometimes, and you've been a coach, Ms. Cortez, sometimes coaches, we get a little bit vivacious. Ah, that lightning is only a mile away. Well, it's, it just blew up the house across the street. So I'm just saying is we don't, we don't want our coaches to have that. And when a trainer says something like that, if they do not listen, and me or Meredith or Tom or Dare, they call us and we talk to them right there. That's why we have site athletic people, site managers at those locations for any bad weather and things like that. So this to us is like bad weather. We are going to always follow the cautions of the kids. And the trainers are the ones who's going to be able to supersede that.
So in that context, but a twist in terms of extracurricular activities and maybe even in-school activities, are we taking a similar planned approach with regard to choir or vocal groups and instrumental music groups?
I can't answer that, so I'm going to have to let that to one of my other distinguished colleagues.
Yes, we are. One of the things that we've done is we've consulted with a lot of other districts. And then I'm on a call every week with the Council for the Great City Schools where we collaborate a lot around what things that we need to be thinking about and then how other districts are actually dealing with some of these issues. We have a fine arts group right now. We have a fine arts committee. And they are consulting all of the information that we have nationally about what needs to happen with band groups, with orchestra groups, with choir groups, with dance groups, all of those things. And so they are in the process right now of working on recommendations for fine arts programs and what things we need to do and how we'll handle some of these challenges that may come up or may arise sometime in the fall semester. And so this Friday is the day that we'll actually hear from many of our groups around what they are actually, what their recommendations are. But I can tell you that all of our groups have consulted with a lot of the, the national organizations so that we can make sure that we're always following what, what's being done nationally and what's being done by some of the organizations like the National Music Education Association and all of those type associations. And so we plan to have recommendations soon. But I will tell you, we do have a group and we are vetting all of the things that could happen in a fine arts program.
Okay, I know that that's been a very challenging area for religious institutions in looking at reopenings because there isn't, at least at this point, clear guidance about how much, how much additional distancing is required for people who are singing. And that's been a real challenge.
And Ms. Cortez, I can tell you that part of that champions group, my associate A.D., she's involved with it too. So she'll also be given the perspective of what Misha's saying about athletics as well and that thing. So we're, we've got our toes in the water.
Okay, thank you very much.
Ms. Wolfsey? You're muted.
Sorry, apologies. Thank you for the presentation. I can't imagine what putting together a reentry plan is like. So know that I know and appreciate you are balancing the safety and security of the students and the health and wellness of them, as well as the teachers and administrators that are coming back. I do want to kind of build, I think, on what Dr. Jones was kind of getting at about, you know, parents' comfort level in returning. And as much as I don't love the fact that we're in a competitive market environment with our students, I do think that that has to be a part of when you start gathering stakeholder information is really understanding that ability for parents to choose whether or not they want to come back full-time, or not full-time, but come back in person versus virtual. I have heard of schools here locally who are potentially asking parents, you know, you can choose. Either you come back and you'll be in person, but it'll be on an alternating week schedule. So there'll be Group A and Group B. Or if you're not comfortable with your child attending, you can choose and continue to do virtual. So I, I just want to throw that out there to say it's, you know, now we've got another thing that parents can choose on. And, and so for us, we need to think about that as we're balancing all these different things. The other part in the reentry plan that I just want to make sure I understood because it kind of goes back to that, how parents make decisions about where their kids are going to end up. If we make a decision too late in the game and others have already communicated out- If we make a decision too late in the game and others have already communicated out what their plans will be, and that gives those parents an opportunity to go, well, it looks like they've got what I am looking for, so I might explore changing schools. So it's just another thing that we have to think about. So no question, just thoughts. And then I love that we're continuing the institutes because I do know that those have been wonderful events in the past. And I apologize, Dr. Shepherd, because I was kind of multitasking, but the teacher input on the P.E.D. part, how do we, how do you guys figure out what they want? Again, I'm sorry.
Well, what I did at the end of the year, I sent out a padlet to them, which is an app that we use to get feedback, and many of them actually responded to the padlet, which is what we're using to determine what our sessions are. Then they're emailing. Some of them are emailing us and saying, hey, we need more of this. And so we're compiling all of those things and we're making decisions and determinations based on what they feel like they need. But the padlet is pretty well, they participated very well in that, and so our team is actually taking those items and making them happen. Not all of them said they needed digital learning things. Some of them said they needed just a little bit more on some other areas. So we wanna make sure that we have a broad array of things to meet the needs of all of them, and that's generally what we try and do. And then we look also at feedback from last year. We look at some of the sessions that were well-attended and we talk to those individuals to see, is there some way they can twist it and help us to, help teachers to pivot around doing whatever that they were presenting on digitally, if they have to do that. And so there's several things that we're using, but we are getting feedback from our staff and our teachers.
That is wonderful. I attended those like the last couple of years. I hope you'll allow us to also be a part of those when you do them. I will tell you, when you guys do surveys, it is super helpful for me to get those comments or to see that, that is good info for me as a board member to just kind of digest. If you would be willing to share those, that information, the Friday update, I would love to see that. I don't know if anybody else would, but that gives you insight into like stakeholders that we can't always get on our own. So I know we've gotten it before from Kelly or Ms. Waichol on other things as well, so I just, that would be great.
You want the padlet? You want the?
The comments. A lot of times they'll put good juicy comments. There's more in the comments, I think.
It's a padlet. It's a padlet where they can, where they're writing. And also what I'll do is I'll send the link to the padlet and you can just go on there and see all the feedback they've given.
Thank you.
Dr. Bedell, I'm gonna take my turn, I guess, on this round. I know that we're going to have a special meeting to have a deeper conversation on this topic next Wednesday on June 17th, and so I know we'll have time to really hash through. I think, I wanna echo just a couple of comments already made. I'm, based on the enormity of the issues that we're grappling with, I think a very robust parent engagement inquiry process is really important at this stage. And I really do appreciate what my colleague, Dr. Jones, said because I wanna make sure that we are trying to reach people across our geographic area and across maybe a spectrum so we can capture a wide spectrum of perceptions and beliefs. So I think a robust parent inquiry process. I think the only, and it's not a question, it is a thought. I do have some questions in my mind about being able to inform parents not until mid-July as to what exactly we're doing. So I'm just, I'm gonna kind of hold that until we meet on the 17th, but I'm wondering about the surety. I know parents are also looking ahead and trying to figure out what their lives are gonna look like in the fall, and I know there's unsureness. And then my final comment is, when you have the three calendar approaches, I'm hoping that next, when we have our next discussion on this, I'm very interested in hearing the administration's perspective on strengths, weaknesses, and maybe threats or challenges with each of these approaches because each approach or each sort of calendar is gonna have its values and, you know, benefits, but also I think some shortcomings. And I think I would like to be able to hear your perspectives on what those are. So I think those are kind of my thoughts leading into the next conversation. Are there any other additional questions? Rita?
And again, these are, these are questions for our next discussion, but I wanna preview them. And they're really around, as you're thinking through, as your task forces are working, what our guideposts will be with regard to testing and tracing? Who will our partners be in that regard? How will we have those guideposts for the opening and closing of a classroom or the opening and closing of a building? I think there are some good lessons and some challenging lessons to learn from some of the other countries that have reopened their schools, and I hope that information is flowing through the channels that are, whether it's through the Council of Great City Schools or others. But I do think it will be, you know, as we, as we talk through this, I think it's important for us to have an understanding of how we will communicate to the community kind of what our stop-go components will be so that if somebody hears about something, they don't just freak out and they know that we have a plan. We don't just have a plan to open, but we have a plan to stay open, and we have a plan to shift gears when necessary. And we know kind of what those markers, at this point, we think we know what those markers will be as we announce our reopening plan. So I'd like that to be in the discussion set as we dig deeper. But, and I know that any plan is only as good as the data that we're getting and our ability to work with it. So it's not, I'm not asking this question because I'm looking for a specific answer. I'm really asking for an understanding of our thinking process.
Thank you. I know that we will be having additional conversation on this, so I encourage my colleagues to, you know, if there's any other additional considerations that they're hoping, you know, to get, that we'll have a chance to talk about this at our June 17th meeting. So, Dr. Bedell, I'm going to go ahead and move to the next item, which is you are going to just outline for us is items for our June 24th business meeting.
Sure, so one item that's missing, and we'll go at the bottom, or, yeah, the bottom would be the approval of the FY 2021 budget. So that's not here, but I wanna make sure that people know that we will be asking you all to take action on adopting that budget. Budget Amendment Two will take place next week. We're asking the board to take action on Architect of Record, Uncall Contract Not to Exceed $750,000. So very similar to what we did roughly two months ago at a board meeting around the Engineer of Record, trying to just keep everything contained with one, one, you know, sector that can, that can handle this and not have it all over with multiple people managing these different records. KCAVA, I mean KCAV, the Digital Temperature Scanning Devices, goes back to what we were just talking about now, in the amount of $336,340. We are looking to do, get you all to approve a contract for Apple iPads for pre-K in the amount of $440,340. The Boys and Girls Club, we talked about the MOU, and so we want to get you all to approve that MOU for our summer school programming in the amount of $250,744. And then the renewal of property and liability insurance is getting the board to take action on those items. So those will be the business meeting items for two weeks.
Thank you so much. If there are no other updates from you, Dr. Bedell, nor from my board colleagues, this will bring us to the conclusion of the agenda for this evening, and we will proceed to adjourn. But I ask my colleagues to remain for the completion of our executive session items, which are the Board Chair Open Items. And so with this, this meeting is adjourned, and we will then reconvene to complete our Board Chair Open Items. So if there is no other discussion, we will consider this meeting adjourned. At this stage, we will come back, and I know this is unusual, but we will go to Board Chair Open Items from Executive Session. And the first item on that agenda is Discussion of Board Governance Goals. And I believe that the Board Secretary will be able to pull up a document on the screen for us. You'll recall that the, that we as a board went through our process of discussing what kinds of governance goals that we wanted to set for ourselves in this year. And we worked with MSBA to identify our primary goal and then a set of strategies that were priority, that we felt were our top priorities. We discussed this through a couple of different meetings and took quite a bit of time. And so the action that we agreed to undertake at this time is to adopt our Board Governance Goal, and then we will,
Sorry, I didn't quite catch that.
And then we will set up a process by which we will tackle in small groups the various strategies. And these efforts, I say this as much, not as much for the board, but any of the community and the, and our colleagues on the Board of, the administration who are present, is the strategies and work will be work that we undertake ourselves as a way to strengthen our own governance practices and meet our governing and fiduciary responsibilities. So at this time, I would, I will have you review on the screen the Top Governance Goal that we have set, which is by June 2021, the Kansas City Public Schools Board of Education will routinely demonstrate that student achievement and attainment of the Global Ends Policy 1.0 is the district's purpose as measured by the implementation of the processes and strategies outlined in the Board Growth Plan and results on the MSBA Board Self-Evaluation. So this is the goal that we had come to an agreement on, that we wanted to demonstrate through a series of work that we would undertake, the importance of student achievement and achievement of the global ends as written in board policy as our primary work. And then we identified a set of strategies that we felt would help us achieve that work. So if, I'm not going to go through the strategies tonight because the first action item is for us to adopt this governance goal. And then we will set aside time at our next board meeting for, we will make some decisions about how to break into small groups to, I mean, how to work in small groups on these various strategies to undertake these. Are there any questions or comments on this Board Governance Goal? All right, hearing none. It would be in order to receive a motion to adopt this goal as our Board Governance Goal for 2020, 2021.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any debate on the goal?
Right.
Hearing none, I will ask the secretary to call the roll. Thank you for your patience. Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Mr. Westerstrom?
No.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Thank you. There is approval of that Board Governance Goal. The next item is Discussion of Missouri Open Meetings and Records Act, but if it is okay with my colleagues, I'm seeing some text communication. I had this under Board Item Announcement, but I'm gonna go ahead and move this item up so we can go ahead and answer these questions. An item under Board Announcements is, there's been a desire to set a Board Budget Discussion that would come prior to our Board Business Meeting on June 24th. And so the, we had talked about the possibility of doing a board discussion on either, there was some exploration of could we do our Board Budget Meeting on Friday, the 19th? Or could, do we need to look for an alternative date? The, on Friday, the 19th, we do have, several of us are registered for the MSBA Leadership Conference. In addition, in conferring with Dr. Bedell, his preference was not for that date. And so this is an exploratory question. It is not finalized yet. So I wanna make sure that people know this is not finalized. The question is, would the board be open to meeting, doing an 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. meeting on Monday, June 22nd? And if there are challenges with that date, please go ahead and let, let's talk about it right now. June, we will not receive the board books on the budget until Tuesday, the 16th. Those will be available to us. They can be delivered to our homes or we can pick them up. We do have a meeting already set for the 17th. And so I'm just trying to, trying to work our way through some sticky scheduling things here. So I open it up. This is open dialogue.
The only reason that 22nd is a concern to me is just that it's so close to the 24th. So if there's a bunch of questions and we need revisions, it's gonna be, I think, a challenge for Linda and team to go address those in the budget, come back with changes in that, you know, day and a half or so between the two, or I guess it's technically two days between the two meetings. So I'm fine with the 22nd. I just think that we, we probably wanna strongly consider pushing the 24th budget approval conversation to somewhere around the 28th, 29th.
So I guess the question I would have, Nate, is if we come together on the 22nd and we make, we feel not equipped to take action in two days, we could make a decision at that time to change, we could set a date for adoption of the board budget?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you're not suggesting we go ahead and make that change now? You're just, you wanna know that we have the wherewithal and, and understanding that we could in fact do that if on the 22nd we feel we need additional time?
Exactly.
Okay, any other thoughts on that? Can I just get a thumbs up if on Monday, 6:22 would work for you? Can I just find out if it does work for people?
Good for me.
I see Manny nodding. Rita, Mark, or Westerstrom, will that work for you, Monday, the 22nd?
I'm trying to get my other computer where my calendar is up, so I'll tell you as soon as I get my calendar on.
Okay, all right. And are we, do we want it 8:00 a.m.? Do you want it 8:30? Any preference? Any preference?
8:30. But I'm not a morning person. So yeah, I'll meet at 8:00 if we got to meet at 8:00.
And we will be meeting virtually, so. And let me repeat, the binders won't be ready until Tuesday, the 16th. I want to restate that for everyone. Thank you. Oh, okay. And she, Linda's saying to us on, through communication here, that they won't be ready on that morning, but they should be ready during that day on the 16th. Okay, all right. So we will plan that we'll do 8:00 a.m. on Monday, June 22nd. So thank you, Administration, too, for working with us on that schedule. We really appreciate it. So let's come back up to Item B now, Discussion of Missouri Open Meetings and Records Act. And Bill Thornton is going to start this discussion for us at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me share this. Can you guys see it?
Yes. Yes, we can also see your notes.
Can you? That's okay.
And I'm glad to know your name is Bill Thornton.
That's okay. I was asked to do a presentation on Sunshine. I think it's the second one that I've done. And I just kind of want to go through it fairly distinctly, so let me get started. I believe following the Sunshine Law is, falls under our strategic plan as far as being responsive to customer service. The Sunshine Law says it declares Missouri's commitment to the openness of government. And the thing I want to talk about next is what pulls the Kansas City School District into the Sunshine Law? And we are, by statute, an urban district. That makes us a public governmental body, and all public governmental bodies in Missouri are subject to the requirements of Sunshine. So what are records? And I'm going to focus on records in this and not some of the other things, meetings and some of those things in this presentation. And records as defined in Sunshine are records that are stored or retained by or for a public body. They're subject to Sunshine. A public body isn't required to create records on demand. Even though most public bodies will try to go ahead and provide that, but a request for data that you don't either store or retain doesn't fall under Sunshine. It would be more of a data request. All requests for records should be directed to the custodian of records. There's, there are some folks that believe that there's some kind of maybe formal process to declare who the custodian of records is. Some public organizations do that, some don't. What the statute requires is that, once you get a request on who the custodian of records is, then you have to provide the identity and location of that custodian of records. One of the things that we did, Mr. Wasserstrom helped with this, and that is that, as he was going through our website, he thought that it was difficult, it might be difficult for the public to be able to know how to file a request. So we added a link to our website. So if you go to District Information, if you go to Sunshine Law Request, then we have a unique email that helps you know how to file those. When it comes to the process of, of how you respond to a, a request for public records, I'm just going to walk you through that. First, you have to respond, do an initial response within 10, within three days. Now, you can either provide those requested records at the end of that three days or before, if, if, if the public body decides to do that. If you can't provide those records, then you have to explain why you can't. And then, and it has to be a reasonable reason. And then you have to give a time of when you believe that you can give those records. You can close records, but you can only close records if you sign up a proper provision in the Sunshine Law to allow for you to be able to do that. And let me talk a little bit about the three days, because for some folks, I know I'm talking specifically about us, I'm just saying in general, have struggled with what, what, what makes up those three days. And you can get some guidance from the AG's office. The AG's office, if you go to the website, they have a thing that's called Top 10 Things to Know. If you go to number six, what that language says is that custodian of records should respond to a records request as soon as possible, no later than three business days after the custodian receives the request. So key words are business days. So what's, how that's defined by Attorney General's Office and that is that the, the public body gets three business days to make that initial response. So it doesn't count if it's, if you get a request on holiday or over the weekend when your, the public organization isn't in business. And then you have until the last day of those three business days to be able to give your initial answer. And there are fees that a public body can charge to provide requested records. And there are two sections, subsections in that statute, and they're very different. And you have to be careful because they have different requirements. The first one, which is number one, subsection number one, is that it's for paper copies. And that's kind of the old traditional way that requests were made. And you can't charge more than 10 cents per copy. And whatever work that is done to, to get those copies, you can only charge the average hourly rate of clerical staff. Now, you can, you can use the cost of research time. And where that differs from the second one, the second one is for fees for electronically maintained records. And the distinction there is that you can charge staff time for the cost of making those copies or programming, and also the cost of any electronic device you need for duplication. Now, where that is very different is you, you can't include research time on that. You can include staff time to get those copies in program. And where, where it also is different is that you're not limited to the average hourly rate of clerical staff. You can charge for the folks that get those copies and do that programming. You can charge the actual cost of, of that staff. But what you can't do, what you can include in that staff time is any time that attorneys work on that, fulfilling that request. There is enforcement if you don't follow the Missouri Sunshine Law. And for knowing violations, you can have fines up to $1,000. And the court, if they find that you have did a knowing violation, they can add the court costs and also attorney's fees. Knowing is, is defined in case law, Missouri case law. And what that takes is an actual knowledge that the body knew that they were violating a statutory provision of the statute. Now, purposeful violation is different. And the fines there can be up to $5,000. But there, by statute, the court, if they find that there is a purposeful violation, they must add costs and attorney's fees. And that's where, that money can be a lot more than $5,000. Now, that is also defined in statute. And what the courts have said is that there has to be a conscious design intent, plan to violate the law with an awareness of the probable consequences. And that is it. So what questions do you have?
I want to open this up and, and see if there's any questions among the board members about that process and about the timeline and when costs, when and how costs are assessed. Mr. Wasserstrom, you raised your hand?
Yeah. Bill, did you get a copy of Gross versus Parson yet?
I did. I did, and I went through it.
Was it helpful?
It was. It was.
I just saw the MSBA write up on it. You know, they didn't include the cost. I don't even have a, you know, Southwestern Second Digest. I don't know if it's been digested yet. But according to the article in the MSBA newsletter, it would appear that anything that is stored in electronic form should be produced without any research time.
That's true. And that's, that's what I said in my presentation. And that's where it's different in that section versus the number, that, that number one subsection. I agree.
Well, I, I appreciate your assistant reducing the charges for the document request that I made from $450 to $75. And I wrote her at the end of the day today to let me know who to make the check payable to. I've raised funds from people in the school district that are interested in getting that information out. And so I'll get you a check for the $75, and I'll look forward to the information.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wasserstrom.
Are there any other questions on this information? Okay. Hearing no questions, I do, I do want to remind, oh, I see Dr. Jones has her hand up. Go ahead, Dr. Jones, and another.
I'm sorry. I'll make this really quickly, quick. I guess, and I don't know if this is the space for this time for discussion, but I just am really confused as to what, what is with our breakdown that's occurring that would require us as board members to have to do these requests? I guess I'm trying to understand, are there types of data that, you know, just, just aren't, you know, maintained and not just, just not easily retrieved? Because there, there, that is a common occurrence. Or, you know, and I would like to know from my colleague, Mr. Wasserstrom, do, um, why, how do I want to say this? How do we come to the conclusion that something is being intentionally withheld? I just, I don't, I don't understand.
You and everybody else on the board knows it. I'll give you one example out of many, many, many examples I could. And that is the settlement agreement with Mike. There was a reason why I wanted to look at the settlement agreement, which was denied me. It was withheld. I said I wasn't going to vote on approving the settlement agreement when I was refused the right to look at the settlement. I knew there was some stuff in there, and there was. And it's going to come back and haunt the school district because we cavalierly and ill-advisedly approved a settlement agreement that was not written properly. But that's a discussion for a different, but I finally got it. After Bill looked at me and patted me on the shoulder, he said, "Mark, I'll give you a 71-page document that nobody else has seen that's the investigation by the FBI guy that we hired." And the FBI guy documented about the criminal activity.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Yes.
Can I interrupt you? You are talking about it.
Marvia, I'll talk to you privately.
You are talking about information.
If our president doesn't want to talk about board business at a board meeting, I'll talk to you privately.
Mr. Wasserstrom, you're talking about information that was discussed in closed session by this board related to a personnel matter. And if you would like to talk about that issue, you can make the request to the board, and we can add it to the agenda for discussion appropriately at a meeting.
Patty, you're good at mixing apples and oranges. I believe that we did enter into the settlement agreement with Mike. We signed it. And I think that once we signed it, then the fact that we signed an agreement is no longer something that's closed.
Mr. Wasserstrom, if you want to talk about this further, then let's find the right time to do that conversation.
Fine.
The one thing I do want to say, which I, it kind of feeds back into what Dr. Jones is asking, is I, it's really important that we all go back and read our Board Policy and understand that we have an ability to request information, that the administration is not, is not, does not intend to nor is allowed to withhold information from the Board of Education if we collectively bring a request forward for information. So they are not, to my knowledge, currently doing so. But that's, you know, my perspective on that. But nor are they allowed to withhold information. And so I, I just want to make that statement here that we can make, we can develop our own, through conversation as a board collectively, we can develop that what is the nature of our information needs, and we can put those requests forward. So there, there is a mechanism to do so. You trying to comment? I'm sorry.
I, I am trying to comment. I am trying to comment because, and I'll say this, since, you know, public has heard some of this conversation. The accusations that, that right now are being made by Mr. Wasserstrom, I want to hear more about all of these examples of administration not being upfront in providing information that's been requested. I have concerns, and I'll say this, we've had this conversation before when Mr. Wasserstrom made a decision, you know, to put stuff on Facebook accusing me of being involved in some type of nepotism scheme, and then had to go back and clean that up. And I, I'm, I'm really concerned when you have a board member doing this kind of stuff. And so I'm interested in wanting to know, what is it that we've done to not be upfront and forthright with this community regarding how we've operated this school district? And what I'm not going to do is continue to sit here and have an individual try to destroy my character for whatever reason, because there's individual agendas that need to be accomplished, and I'm going to do whatever I got to do at no cost. I will not sit here and continue to take this. That's where I am with this.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. I think Ms. Wolfsee and Marvia, did you still have your hand up? Okay, can, if I can go to Ms. Wolfsee, and then I'll come to you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. You know, not only, yes, Dr. Bedell, I, I agree with what you just said, but also there are two board members on this that have carried over from the previous board as well. And I'm, I'm, I want to make sure I, I don't. I thought that the way that the board works best is when we bring things to this board. This is the way that has been done in previous, my previous board I served on. Where we worked as a group through Board Voice to determine what were the things that we did want to bring as a board, as a question from us to you, the administration, to then have answered. And that we, as a collective, would kind of hash that out. Is this the priority that we want you working on? Because for me, I have a great concern, in addition to, I don't want to, you know, go down the other path you were just talking about, but I have a concern that we cannot have seven board members asking administration for individual things that I would like to have looked at. We have so much on our plate. We, on you, mostly you, not so much us, but I use the "we" collective as the school district, we have to get school ready for the fall. And we need to make sure that the limited amount of time that you as a, as a district and administration have is working on the things that this collective board has said are the priorities. And I would like to just say that I would like us as an organization, the board, to really hold ourselves accountable, which I think is what we're doing right now, about we need to work our process to bring things to the administration that we want the administration working on. And that's just, that's how I feel, so I don't want to speak for my other colleagues. But I'm having a real hard time understanding how it is going to serve the students of this school district if seven of us start sending our individual requests to the administration.
Dr. Jones, I'll go ahead and go to you.
Yeah, I, I know that as a board, we have a responsibility to question and to oversee, oversee a lot of the decisions that are made by the district. But I can tell you that, Mr. Wasserstrom, the way that you have gone about this seems to fall in line with the long history of people who questioned the credentials of Black and Black and Brown people. So when I hear you say, this wasn't filed right, you know, this lost, this, this settlement agreement wasn't written properly, and there, there have been other times where you've made comments that sort of directly questioned the expertise, um, not just questioned or not just kind of given like a comment, because that's our role, I know. But when you point out and say, you didn't do this right, or I don't trust that you, do you know what you're doing when it comes to law? I take strong offense to that because I know what it's like to have credentials that are questioned. And so I think that, um, I don't know you all that well and I don't know what, I'm not trying to say what's in your heart, but I'm telling you what it can come across as. And this has been a long pattern of over a year of me hearing you constantly in meetings point out negative perverse things about the, the administration or about the legal counsel. And I think that we gotta stop, there's, there's a way, if that's not what's in your heart, you gotta find a better way to phrase that, um, because that's, that's how it comes across to me and I know what that feels like all the time. So, um, I just, I don't know that you're aware of how that comes across and you may not see yourself in that way, but that's what it sounds like.
Um, at this point, I mean, I certainly want to make it available for any other, um, thoughts on the, the presentation here. Um, at this point, it's important for me to, um, go ahead and share that the board officers have asked the legal services department to review Mr. Wasserstrom's communications in regards to board policy and our board policy, um, guidance. And so, um, we will have additional conversation about that going forward. The other thing I want to say is one of the important aspects of our, uh, governing, um, goals and priorities that we set and the kind of passion. And, and I felt like cohesion we showed in saying our number one priority is to place academic achievement and student opportunity at the forefront of our discussions and the success. And the stakes, I think, are particularly high, even more so than they seemed when we undertook this process. It feels the stakes are very high. Some of the strategies that we identified, I feel really good about because some of those strategies will include figuring out how we as a board want to undertake greater collective dialogue so that we can, as a collective, determine what information that we want, what do we think are priorities and, and what do we want to, how do we, um, how do we create opportunity for us to like talk things through to come to some one voice, to come to a collective voice? And I think that was something that we carried away from that process, uh, that we had with Janet Tilly. And, and it may be through that as we start to execute these things that we will find that we, we're going to come, we're going to find things that are, we value collectively that we feel are going to push that ultimate goal. Um, and, you know, furthermore, that, going through those strategies will help demonstrate, it'll, I think, create strength for us and, and demonstrate to the community our desire and our, our collective action around, um, working productively for the success of children. And so I, I just want to add that, that I do think our governance process will be helpful. That's all I have on this item. If, I don't know that if folks have any other final notes, but we do have one additional item, which is a, a brief update on HB 1854. So I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Jennifer Wolfsey for that information.
Okay, I know it's late, um, so I'll try to make this quick, give us plenty of time to have a, a discussion. So I don't know how many of you might have read closely the Legislative Voice from the Missouri School Boards Association, but HB 1854 was actually an omnibus bill. We're not even really sure what its original intention was, but there was some good stuff in there. However, it's kind of the poster child for why omnibus legislation is really not the best way to, to make policy, because there was an unintended consequence, um, that is pretty, it's extremely negative for us. So let me explain what it is. Um, essentially, there's a part in the omnibus bill that's trying, and I, I had a little bit of the history of why this is in there. There was a small city in St. Charles County that was trying to actually, um, respond to, um, some constituent concerns about the fact that when people file for an election, not just school board elections, but, um, that because the filing window is so big, um, it, it actually shortens the amount of time that people have to get to know their, um, candidates. And so what they were trying to do was shorten the window of the filing to actually add more time for the candidates to be able to get out and, um, talk and people to get to understand who the candidates were and whatnot. Well, the problem is, so they were trying to go from five weeks to three. Specifically in, um, our area, it now takes the compressed timeframe that we used to have to file down to one week. And not only is it just one week, it happens to hit right over the, uh, Christmas holiday. So it's the December 22nd through December 29th. And so, um, obviously that has a lot of negative, um, impact to the ability for us to have candidates have, uh, that we, you know, we want a longer window of time, uh, to be able to allow for a number of candidates to file. Um, so many people didn't realize this, so there are a couple of efforts underway to, uh, try and get the governor to veto this piece of legislation since it does affect a number of school districts over here in the Kansas City, um, Missouri side. So right before this meeting at about 4:30, 4:25, you should have all received the letter that we, and since this affects us as a governing body, um, we believed it should come from the governing body. Um, and so this is a letter to Governor Parsons outlining why we would like him to veto this legislation. And, um, I'm not going to read it on here because you all have it in front of you hopefully. And, um, time really is of the essence right now. This is obviously approved by the legislature sitting there waiting for a signature, according to Chris Ropé, who I did speak to right before the call. He did say though, that he did not believe yet that the bill has been reviewed. Um, there's a bill review process before the, uh, governor, uh, signs it, but that doesn't mean that like tomorrow, this couldn't be signed. So time is still of the essence and we'd like to, um, I would like to ask for a motion. I'm recommending that we send this letter signed by the board chair on our behalf to Governor Parsons, asking him to veto the bill for the, uh, reasons outlined in the letter. And before I ask for, um, so we're recommending that that happened and we were asking for a vote to approve the, the letter. But I'll ask, I'll answer any questions that I can. I know Bill's on here, I know Linda's on here, but, um, I think I've covered most of what's going on. And, and one of the points I think we've been trying to do as a school district is to bring ourselves in alignment with other school districts. So ideally, if we, if he did veto this and it got worked on next, um, session, we'd try to be the same as everybody else where, you know, if there are three weeks, we'd be three weeks. Um, one of the other things, Bill, that I have not, because I was on the call with Chris as we were jumping onto Exec, I don't know that we know, but this may mean that we actually also have to gather the signatures during the 22nd through the 29th? I, and, and that, we still don't have a definitive on that, but that is extremely, I mean, I know all of you sitting on here that have filed, getting those signatures between the 22nd and the 29th, being able to, to turn them in, um, during that time period, because it's the closing of the candidate filing we're talking about. The window is going smaller. So I do believe it means we'll confirm, you'd either get 250 signatures or 500, depending if you were running as a sub-district or a, um, at-large, in a week period during the holidays.
It is, because I, I, I know that in this district, we have to get the signatures. I, I'd have to look it up to see when the timing is, but I think that does make it more complex than it does for other districts.
Yeah. Disproportionately making it very difficult for us to get, um, people filed for candidacy. Any questions from, I'm looking around the screen. Okay, then.
I think Rita, did you have a question?
Oh, really, my question was going to be, what are the, what are the countering pressures? I mean, what, are there critic, are there things in this omnibus bill that, you know, are, are, um,
That people want?
Significance that we are pushing a rock uphill?
So that's a really good question. Uh, right before I got on here, Chris was explaining that there are, um, other entities not like ours, but that are pushing against this bill as well. So there are for other reasons. So there are, I, I got the impression there are a couple of different organ, um, constituencies, if you will, that are pushing for veto for different reasons. So obviously the school district's negatively affected by the filing. I don't know if the others that he was, he didn't give me any specifics because as you can tell, I was jumping on the call. Um, he was, it, it didn't seem like there was going to be a lot of pushback, um, that, um, and I don't want to speak for him, but, uh, I was getting a sense that asking for the veto, you know, and then having us come back and address this as we should and, and getting all the smaller bit parts correct so that it doesn't have the unintended consequences that it did, um, I think seemed palatable, but, um, I don't know that we're going to have a lot of headwind on this is what I was getting a sense of.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Mr. Wasserstrom, your hands raised?
Yeah.
I can't hear you, Mark.
Can you hear me now?
Now I can.
Oh, it keeps.
Yep, you're going in and out.
Okay. Well, I'll try and maybe I'll get lucky here.
Okay.
Shit. Okay, there we are.
Well, no.
Who knows?
Now I see you.
Mark, I think you're muted. Can you, if you are muted? If you, if you want, you can type your question if you're able to access the chat. So you could do that.
I give up.
All right. Um, any, so Jennifer, you were asking for a motion to approve this letter being delivered to Governor Parsons, correct?
Yeah, yes. And I did want to point out, Linda did, uh, in the chat, that this does have a fiscal note of $5 million. And that was kind of to Rita's point, I think that was part of the thinking is that because it does have that sort of price tag associated with it, that would help with the potential to have it maybe be vetoed under the current conditions.
Okay. Um, so at this point, we have, I think, did we get a motion in a second? I'm sorry, I'm.
No, uh, so moved.
Second.
All right. Any debate on that motion? Hearing none, the secretary will call the roll.
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hagen?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
We may not be able to, he may not have access right now.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, great. That, that motion approved has, uh, passed and so we have the letter. We've received a copy of the letter, so we know what the letter says. And then, um, hopefully we can stay informed and, um, understand if there's additional avenues for us, if it does get signed to press.
Patty, can I get one more piece of update from Chris? Once we have the letter, he will then have the, he wanted the letter in hand before he went to the governor's office, um, set up the appointment to speak with, um, the folks in the governor's office. So he said he will get on that immediately, so.
Great.
We should have an update quickly.
Great, okay. Um, at this time, I want to turn this to board member voice. And I, I want to apologize to everyone, the board member voice did not appear on the agenda and it should appear on every agenda. So, um, we will remedy that going forward and Rita, I want to turn it over to you. Thank you for your patience.
It's okay. And I, I, everyone, thank you for your patience. I know the hour is late and I will, I will keep this, uh, brief. Um, Dr. Bedell, I wanted to thank you and Ms. Waichel and your team for the powerful statement put forth on our mutual behalf regarding the murders of George Floyd, Ahmaud Arbery, and Breonna Taylor and our obligation to defend the lives of the Black and Brown children in our city. We remain steadfast in our commitment to provide each student access to and encouragement toward a high-quality education, including the social and emotional supports necessary to ensure their engagement and progress. Among many, two questions arise for me on how we as a board and as a school system can deepen our support for our students in the current moment. First, is there an opportunity to provide our students with increased knowledge and tools about racial equity? How do we bring our equity policy to life for our students and help them understand what we train our faculty and staff on in this regard? Second, is there an opportunity to capitalize on this teachable moment in history to provide resources, information, links to articles, films, documentaries, commentaries, or any other resource which would provide our students with context and depth to grow in their knowledge and ability to express their concerns, their fears, their rights, their hopes and their dreams? Our students come from many different neighborhoods, circumstances, family structures, countries, but can we share information with them in the current moment to help them grow in their own advocacy and knowledge? I recognize in, in sharing these two questions that, um, there is an enormous amount of work on your shoulders and your team's shoulders in planning for the next year, but I do really wonder if there's an opportunity for us as educators and as an educational system to give our students, um, de- depth and power, um, as they go into this new time. That's my voice.
Thank you, Rita. I really appreciate that. It's a powerful statement. I saw, I can see heads nodding and, and everything. I think it is a lot of food for thought and opportunity and, um, I really appreciate your thinking in that realm of how we equip our young people. Is there anything, anyone else wants to comment on, on, on Rita's statement?
Completely, completely agree with the notion of getting our kids actively engaged in this. And so, um, maybe there's an opportunity to, to drop a piece of curriculum and add this in its place, you know, I, I don't know, but I think, I think there's a, a ton of benefit, benefit to not just the kids and their parents, but also to this community and the future of the city to have kids pushing this, right? And you mentioned it today, Dr. Bedell, right? As part of the commencement ceremony around this group being the next group of leaders that are going to take us to that next level. Well, why not start earlier?
Yeah. Oh, right. And thank you for, yeah, Dr. Bedell's statements at the commencement were very powerful and, um, you know, watch, looking for when I, from my end, when I look at the plug and I see the stories on our kids, that's the picture of young people that we're educating today that I wish the community had a better sense of. The, the talent, the, um, ingenuity, you know, I, I, I don't think the community sees enough of who our, our students really are. And, uh, that's work that the board can help push out that story and we've got to do better about equipping our young people, but making sure the community sees them in the way in which they deserve to be seen. Uh, well, have I forgotten any other agenda items, folks? Good. Thank you all. Thank you all. I really appreciate it. Dr. Bedell, thank you very much. Uh, appreciate this, um, discussion this evening and all of the conversation and, um, your leadership in this regard. So with this, I am going to adjourn this meeting.
Hey, bye, guys. Thank you.